The Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting will begin in thirty seconds. If you wish to speak to- The Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting will begin in ten seconds.
Good evening and welcome to the Pitt County Board of Commissioner evening meetings. To those of you in the audience and those of you by rail of television, of social media, welcome. At this time, we'd like to call the meeting to order. Please, uh, let us know that you're here. Now, I'd like to have the invocation by Commissioner Huggins and pledge by Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Dear Lord, we thank you for this day. We ask that you would come into this meeting and that we, that you will guide us in what we say and do. It would be in the best interest of the people, of your people here in Pitt County. This is our blessing. We ask in your sentience. Amen.
Pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to have the approval of the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have one item we wanted to remove on items for consent. That is the request for purchase of a rubber tire loader. Just wanted to move that to possibly March or later on in the year.
Put it where?
Just taking it off the agenda for this point in time.
Which number is that?
Number eleven on items for consent, which is item number nine.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve with the removal of item eleven under items for consent.
Has been moved properly second for the removal of item eleven. The rest to be as is. Only a favor, let it be known by your vote, please. We have presentation at this time. The first is Scott Darnell, Thriving Small Town Strategy.
Mr. Chairman, that was a motion just to remove the item. We feel you'll do a second motion to approve the agenda now that the item's been removed, please.
Very good.
So move.
Second.
Let's vote, please. Thank you. Yes, sir. Welcome.
Well, well, thank you for your time this afternoon. Wanted to follow up on, you know, several things. The next meeting, I'm going to ask the county manager to appear and give you a lot of great updates on things we're doing at the Development Commission. But wanted to talk to you tonight about a project. And, you know, I, I keep saying this every time we meet, but, you know, I, I love dialogue. I love all of Pitt County. I've been out there. I continue learning a lot more about each of the communities. But, you know, before joining here, we had a lot of calls. A lot of people in this room were on that call. And then throughout my tenure since here, the end of September, you know, we continue having good conversations. And, you know, one of the big topics was Pitt County's a large county, but we got a lot of great towns. And a lot of those great towns have tremendous opportunity. And throughout my tenure here, we're seeing new types of opportunities from bypasses, new housing, new development opportunities. And that's important for our county moving forward from an economic development standpoint. A lot of that feedback, we heard, and we had a great summit. We called it Thriving Small Town Summit in November. A lot of you attended, but we got everybody in the room, small towns. We had good dialogue. We're sharing a lot of the similar passions. And how do we find a way to move forward? Well, tonight, I want to present an opportunity of how we move forward. You know, never figure it all out. You shouldn't. But this is a great approach. This is something we put a lot of time and thought in. We don't have all the answers yet, but wanted to get your input on where we're going, you know, how we can do this and, you know, what are some of the possible outcomes and the tangible benefits from this. We have a lot of projects. We call them all code names. You know, there's no secret here. We call it One Pitt. You know, we're one county. We've got about 180,000 people. And everybody in, in Pitt County, in my view, should prosper or have the opportunity to prosper. Some people would say we've done well at that in the past. And some people will say we probably didn't have well enough in the, in the past as well. So, you know, this is about a path forward. How do we do it? How do we use new tools and techniques? How do we try things different? And how do we look at it from a different perspective and how this looks going forward? We'll talk about some of the points here. You know, if, if we look at each one of our towns, they're all different sizes. They all have different opportunities. They all have different needs and wants. If you ask them what success is, each one of them says something different. Not everyone wants the development that, that I might like. Not everyone wants the, the, the traffic congestion that some actually love. But, but people all want their towns to be something that's passionate to them. And really, that's the most important thing. You know, what do you want to be? How do you get there? Is it realistic? And, you know, be what you want to be in your town. There's many towns that are thriving because they have thriving downtowns. And some are rural and, you know, just have locations per se. But if we broke down each of the towns, I think we find similarities. Some have more of these in common, some have less. But it gives us a good basis to start looking at each of our towns in a different light. You know, first one's entrepreneurship, creating networks to support entrepreneurs and micro business development. Don't think because you don't see a sign on the storefront with parking that, that it's not a business. There's plenty of people, my wife's one of them, that works in the living room with three computer screens and high-speed telecommunication to net connections. And she flies in and out of the airport every week. You know, it's a thriving business in our house. So, you know, times are changing. Entrepreneurship is a massive growth component of our society. And entrepreneurship exists in some form in every one of our towns. You know, thinking local, supporting local businesses first. You know, we call it the flow of money. The more we spend locally, the more it stays in our economy. Campaigns throughout the years, Chamber of Commerce did a great job. You know, spend your dollars locally. But, you know, thinking local, you know, what is important? How do you drive an economy? What are the inputs and outputs to make your local economy successful? And then business development, retaining and growing local businesses. And we had a great event. Over 200 people attended, our existing industry reception last Tuesday. Many of you were there. Thank you. You know, eighty percent of the jobs come from existing businesses. And there's growth opportunities there. They're one contract away from growing and one contract away from going away. Some of them will come, some of them will stay. But Pitt County's rich with 5,000-plus businesses. One may be located in one municipality and want to expand to another municipality. So the business development component's important. Recruitment, you know, bringing, helping start new businesses in your community. And that may be bringing them in, that may be growing them. That may be bringing other related businesses to the area to complement one another. Each of the towns have opportunities there. And then downtown revitalization. Over the past five years, a popular term is a sense of place. And we want a great community with a great school system. We want to feel connected in the community. We would love to go to the coffee shop. We love to collaborate. We love to meet our neighbors. We love to walk up and down the streets. And I don't need a storefront or I don't need an office space because I can build a business out of my house. More and more of that's occurring in our economy today. And supporting agriculture. We got farmers markets, but community-supported agriculture, the farm-to-table movement in different ways. Pitt County's rich in agriculture. Supporting agriculture is a tool for economic development and finding ways to help that connect our towns better. And then tourism development. You know, a, a great tourism opportunity in Pitt County. The greatest thing about tourism is they don't ever ask you for money because they have their own money from the hotel motel tax. But a, a great resource there and tremendous growth there in rural and geotourism opportunities. But bringing this all down is we have towns, we have opportunities, so how do we move it forward? You know, a, a popular thing from a project standpoint, this would be a project, is we would ask you to be the sponsor. We've received some grant funds from the North Carolina Department of Commerce. And if we decide to move forward with this, we would ask that we try to utilize those grant funds and pay for this project to move all our towns forward. And you have become the sponsor. The role of the sponsor in this project is to endorse it. This is the right for Pitt County. You all represent all of Pitt County. But we allocate the funds toward this project and you will be the sponsor. Pitt County Development Commission will be your partners to sponsor. And then the project management role will be a group called Downtown Strategies. Jen Gregory was here to lead our Thriving Small Town. Their division of retail strategies, and they're an expert in helping communities recruit retail. So we'll talk about some of that important. And then a very important part is, is change management. We all experience change. We always laugh. Change is inevitable. Progress is optional. Just because we have a new bypass doesn't mean people are going to get off that bypass. Just because we have downtowns with vacant real estate doesn't mean that vacant real estate's going to be utilized. So if we don't have a plan, we'll be part of someone else's. We get eight to 10 towns, how you look at them. And there's opportunities with every one of those towns, but they're not guaranteed anything because the economy can act within our grasp or without it. So the change management aspect's important to this. We're going to have to look at doing things differently. We're going to take advantage of different opportunities. We need to look at data in different ways. And we need to look at collaboration in different ways. And we need to look at Pitt County as one thriving economy. And each of these small towns are participating piece in that. Our role as the sponsors is to give them the tools to succeed, not do it for them, but do it with them. And we'll talk about that. Five elements to change is awareness, desire, knowledge, ability, and reinforcement. We need to educate them. We need to support them. We need to guide them. But they've got to invest in this strategy themselves. And we want to give them the opportunity, or at least give them the ass to do that. And then we'll provide the resources through project management, the other roles, to move it forward. You know, this is a very strategic, project-focused. I mean, it's going to be customized for each town. The town needs to figure out what they want to move forward with. Again, Downtown Strategies is this project manager. This is very objective-focused. This isn't for towns of 500 people just to come up with a wish list. It's not towns with 10,000 people coming with wish lists. Some things will work, some things won't. We got to use data to focus our resources and our focus to most be effective in the strategy. You know, building upon foundation, recognizing opportunities. All these towns are doing some good things, but how do we take it to the next level? And if you're not improving, sometimes you're dying in some of these strategies. And recognizing opportunities that they may not recognize themselves. And the synergies that will come among all the other communities by using some of the same platforms throughout this process. You know, again, data-driven approach is objective-focused. When companies make investments, you know, they typically look at data, especially from the retail side. You know, the expertise of retail strategies and retail recruitment is going to be very beneficial to some. And the type of retail for some others may not be as the same as the others. But using some of that data to remain focused on those areas. You know, identifying priority areas, like everyone, there's limited resources. Sometimes you have to take baby steps before you take the next step. Each town's at a different place, but identifying the priority areas of the town and, and where they seek success in moving forward. You know, this is a holistic environment. That word's being used a lot, but, but we're using a lot of different areas for these small towns at one time. You know, maybe an agriculture focus, maybe an increased opportunity with tourism. It may be looking at the cultural side of development, maybe looking at community develop and economic development together. It may be growing businesses, maybe recruiting businesses. Or maybe even improving the current retail environment there by using some of our networks with opportunities to look at selling online or different models there. So very holistic in nature. And utilizing national best practices. Sometimes it's great to get in a room and figure it out. Sometimes it's just good to copy someone else. We can bring both of those opportunities to the table with this approach. It's not matter where we end up, as long as the town's happy where they end up, it's their town. But if we can utilize best practices or tools used other places, we can get there much quicker. You know, and a stronger foundation to support towns. You know, the Pitt County Development Commission spent $100,000 in the past five years on municipal grants. We spent another $150,000 on sponsorships. I would like to know when I'm investing money, that I'm making sure that I'm going to get my return back. And I think the state would agree with that. I think this government body would agree to it. Is if we put our resources behind strategies that have been vetted with data, with best practices, the rest, I think we'll have a higher return. I don't like spending money, but I love investing money. And I think that with a good strategy in these towns, we can get a lot further than we have. And then the grant funding opportunities, or at least the collaboration of getting together and sharing these opportunities, sharing these resources. I think we saw some of that very quickly, you know, a month into my tenure here when we had Thriving Small Town Strategy. Again, position is for higher return, success for investments. And lastly, you know, program-based opportunities reinforce the change management. Again, you know, change is inevitable, but progress is optional. You know, if we do it correctly, we can take advantage of some of these opportunities. But if we don't change some of the models, I think some of the reasons we're here today are going to continue growing. And that divide will, will continue to progress in some of these towns. Nothing that, no guarantees, nothing's bulletproof out of this. But another great foundation I see in this project at this time is a county-wide strategic plan. You'll have tremendous data. You'll have great feedback from all our small towns. We'll have a system in place to make sure these opportunities are represented all throughout Pitt County in that plan moving forward. So I think the timing's important, but again, the grant funding and the rest is important as well. So that's, um, an overview of, of looking at each economy independently and trying to find synergies between the two. And making sure that the economic development ecosystem, when it comes to small towns, are going to be represented. And giving the towns a path forward, but a path forward that they choose and we support. And I believe in this approach. I believe in our team members. I love the opportunity of the grant paying for it. We've got some things we want to work out if we decide to move forward. But I think some of the towns' feedback initially, some excitement, how do we put resources to this? And I think this puts us in a great place to have a different conversation, try some different things, but also take advantage of some of the infrastructure opportunities, like the bypass and other growth patterns that are coming on behalf of the economy. And get on the forefront and more strategic of how to move all of Pitt County forward with some of these discussions. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments?
Yeah. I, I want, what do you, when you say if we decide to move forward, what, what are, what is the we here? And what are we moving forward on?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, you know, Commissioner, this was, you know, sort of an ask to you. You know, one, would you like to be a sponsor? Would you like me to work with the county manager to move forward?
What is it that we're sponsoring?
You'll be sponsoring the, um, the cost of this program to move it forward.
And we have money.
Mr. Darnell?
Yes, ma'am.
You talked about a grant and sponsoring. You have a grant in mind?
Yes, ma'am.
So you, um, are you going to send what you just showed us, to us in our email? Or are you going to print it out?
You've already approved, um, the North Carolina Journal Assembly back in 2018 did a grant for $250,000 to Pitt County. It was a joint ask between the city and the county, City of Greenville and Pitt County. You did a budget amendment, I don't know, maybe in the fall of 18. So the money is here. We just need to spend that money technically by June 30th of 2020 this year.
I guess that's what I'm wondering is, is why is it of that money? Why are we spending that money? What is it that we're sponsoring with that money?
I mean, most of the fees will go to the consultants to develop the strategies with the towns. That will be the total program.
And you're going to develop a strategic plan?
Each town will have a sort of a strategic plan. Yes, ma'am.
So that would be done in conjunction with the town?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I think that this is kind of the follow-up to the meeting that we had. I forgot the lady's name that was here that presented.
Jen Gregory.
Jen. The, when we went over to the hospital, when we had the meeting there with all the small towns and they related projects that they were interested in progressing with. And I think what we're saying is, let's move forward now with that money and earmark that money so that when a town comes with a project, and some of the projects are as simple as, we need a grocery store. Help us get one here for our people. It's not so much of a developing a manufacturing company or whatever, that would be great. But, you know, to help them move forward with projects that they haven't been able to do. And I think that it's a good way to use that money.
I just want to say thank you, Scott, for your hard work on this. I'm very excited about this opportunity for our municipalities, and I'm looking forward to supporting them.
Yeah, and Commissioner, the, the grant was allocated to Pitt County. Is that correct, Scott?
Yeah, so it was, it was a joint ask between, I think, when Commissioner Glenn Webb was on board him, and I think maybe somebody from the city, maybe it had been the mayor, but it could only go to one entity. So the, the grant came to Pitt County, but I think there was an understanding that we would jointly try to use it. So I think we're talking about possibly 50% of this grant going towards this project.
Commissioner. What's the will of the PCDC? Has this been presented and what's their recommendation moving forward?
Yeah, you know, I, I think that, you know, the, the, definitely the board was in favor. They presented it, and it was presented out of the auspices. The county has this money. It's not PCDC's money. So we'll ask them to be the sponsor. We're more or less the facilitator to get this going.
Have, have they been asked and have they voted on it yet?
I mean, did we formally vote on it?
No, you just presented it at the meeting.
Yeah. I think that, you know, there's no question of their support, but again, it's the county's money. It was more or less, if the county wants to do it, we'll present the opportunity.
So since this is, this is, Mr. Elliott, is this, this half of the money for this board, at some point, he's going to come back and ask us what to, for, to use, utilize this money? And we're going to be the sponsor using this money? This is what I'm understanding?
Right. He would enter into a, he would negotiate a contract with Retail Strategies for this project. It'd come back to you for formal approval to be on my contract authority. He's asking for your approval of the concept of this and to, to go forward with it and then bring that back.
Yeah.
Mr. Darnell?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to let you know that I like the idea that you're concentrating on the outer edges of the county because this board has heard me preach about that a number of times, how many deserts we have all around, while green via grows and leaps and bounds. And this will be an opportunity to bring the whole county up to snuff. And I like this, and I look forward to hear more about it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Huggins?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion that this board approve the concept
This was-
Uh, for Mr. Darnell to move forward with this.
Okay, move it properly second. Let's-
Uh, I don't understand here.
It is an items for presentation, but if the board wanted to endorse it, it'd be fine to vote on it. It's not a, you'll bring back a formal contract.
And wouldn't that put the money in, in his hands and the Development Commission's hands to help these small towns?
Madam attorney, maybe you could shed some light on-
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, sir. Could we hear, maybe hear from Ms. Gallagher?
Well-
About the legal status?
I think they call him, um, attorney.
His money.
Yeah, so the only thing I would add would be that the motion is appropriate under presentation in order to go forth. The only thing I would caution is, my understanding is that Department of Commerce has to approve the expenditure as well. So what this motion would do would be giving the green light to submit it to the Department of Commerce to say that it's an appropriate use of those funds. And then if Commerce says it is, then he can move forward to bring back a contract for the board's approval.
In the, in the agenda, it says this is a report and a presentation only. Now, if we're going to start breaking, uh, our procedure of doing things and just coming up and making motions of it, you're either going to lose me or you're going to find me bringing up a lot of conversation about it. Because this is a presentation only, and I expected him to come back and ask us for the money.
You have, you have the money on hand, so it's not like you're taking, appropriating money from fund balance or from the county reserves or something. We're just asking for an endorsement, I think, right now.
What's your recommendation?
That's what your motion is.
You didn't make a recommendation.
Yeah, you know- That's what her motion is.
My motion is to move forward with, uh, going to Commerce and, and all of that. So that's what my motion is, to move forward with the concept.
Well, we already have it. Why do we need to go to Commerce?
With the concept.
The state of North Carolina appropriated the funds. When we first asked for the funds, we asked for the funds for three different projects, which now are, are kind of, one was for a railroad spur study for the Harper-Brush building. One was for some marketing dollars, and what, the third one was to look at possibly designing another shell building. And Mr. Darnell has different thoughts on the shell building design, that we don't necessarily need to hire an engineer to design another one. The railroad spur for Harper-Brush, we're being told until we have an actual client that would, how we, we would, we would know how they would use that site, we can't design something until they're actually on the site. And then the marketing, I think Scott has some other strategies he's embarking upon with marketing.
I, I think that, you know, this is, you know, I, I wasn't here when the grant was awarded, Commissioner, but, you know, I think the intention of tonight is, one, respecting this body. You've received this grant. And I'm still going to have to get formal approval with the county manager and the legal involved to ask Commerce formally for the money. You know, tonight was getting your feedback to go through that process of asking for the money that we've already received. And then we'll finalize the contract. We can come back at that point. But I thought it was premature to ask Commerce for a project without your approval, or at least your input first, so we chose to do it this way.
And technically, a, a motion is not necessary on this. If the board is comfortable with Scott moving forward, you don't have to have a motion. But if you want to make a motion, you could. Wouldn't hurt it.
I just think it shows him support and makes him feel like he can make bold decisions.
He didn't ask. He didn't, he didn't make a recommendation. All he did was made a presentation as to what he'd like to do. And then he'd come back and tell us, let's do this. And then I, I'd be right on one, two, three, four, five, rather than one and five and six and seven.
Now, uh, as stated by the county manager, we don't have to make a, a, a motion to do this, but, you know- but in all honesty, we're just doing this as a matter of procedure. But what is the pledge of the board? It has been moving and seconded to do this.
Mr. Chairman, the way I look at it, I seconded the motion. What it does is it makes it a matter of record that we have supported it.
Right. I understand.
And it allows him to move on, move forward right now and not have further delay.
But what was the statement in the motion?
Doesn't matter. We can still change it anytime we want, Mary, and have something like that.
Yes. She's asking what the motion is.
What was the motion? I want to know what the motion, motion tells us.
Would you read the motion, ma'am?
I understood the motion to be to move forward with the concept and take it to the next step.
That's what I didn't, that's, that's what I want to clarification of what the motion was. I just heard some of it.
Okay. Now, I think we have enough discussion in all of the favor of the said motion. Let it be known by your vote and all opposed likewise.
Make a motion. Everybody's going to understand the motion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right. At this time, we have a very good friend, a hard worker of ECVC, Lisa Ross. I want to say, Lisa, as you come forward, you're doing an excellent job at ECVC. We're very proud of the work that you are doing. You may proceed, ma'am.
So, good evening, everyone. I am Lisa Ward Ross, President of ECVC. We have recently met with county staff to give them an update of the state of recycling out at ECVC and we appreciate the opportunity to update you tonight as well. To start, I would like to take you back to the beginnings of residential recycling. Our first contract to operate the materials recovery facility for Pitt County was in 1993. In the early 1990s, when many recycling programs started, the cost to process recyclables was about $60 per ton and these are national numbers. The income from the sale of commodities back then was $200 per ton. There was little or no charge to the resident because local governments wanted to foster adoption of recycling programs and commodity values were high enough to cover the cost. So, it was a win-win for everyone. Since the 1990s, there have been many changes to the recycling industry that have strained the existing business model. These include changes to the commodity mixes. For example, newsprint used to account for nearly a third of all that was collected in residential recycling. Now, the volume is so low that it gets mixed in with all other paper and it results in a less valuable product. Limited end markets. How many of you have noticed the changes in our detergent? We've gone from liquid detergent, which was in a fully recyclable bottle, to pods, which are plastic, but they're off-spec plastic, which cannot be recycled through regular means. And often, it's hard to tell the difference between the two. Lightweighting is another strain on the existing business model. As manufacturers have gone to lighter and lighter packaging, we now have to process more items to get the same amount of weight. For example, water bottles, as you all know, can hardly stand on their own anymore. They're so flimsy. We have to do almost twice the number of bottles or handle twice the number of bottles to achieve the same amount of weight. Contamination in the recycling stream is also up. Eighty percent of communities now have single-stream recycling. That's up from 30% a decade ago. Single-stream simply means that residents do not have to sort their recyclables at home. They put them all in one bin, which then comes to us and we sort them for you. Participation and volume has more than tripled under single-stream, but so has contamination. When we use the word contamination, we're not referring to hazardous waste or anything like that. We're simply referring to things that should not be in the recycling stream. Food waste is the biggest problem. It can ruin an entire load of recyclables as it spreads from the original containers. We also have to contend with residents who treat recycling bins as trash cans, dirty diapers and medical waste included. And then there is the wish cycler. That's the person who hopes things are recyclable, but they're not quite sure, so they put them in the recycling bin hoping that we will sort them out later. And yes, we have to spend extra money to sort those things out that shouldn't have been in there to start with. There are things like the plastic grocery bags at your local grocery market, polystyrene coffee cups, old clothes and electronics. All of them may be recycled, but they require special processing and they should not be in part of the general recycling stream. The current average for contamination is 30%, up from single digits a decade ago. The cost is huge, as you can imagine, due to multiple handling, but the value is declining because the materials cannot be sold in their pure form. And then finally, the biggest strain of all, declining prices, steadily and dramatically declining prices. Existing contracts, like the one we have with you, rely full stock on the existence of strong, good market values to pay for recycling programs and operations. Those market values are just not there anymore. I know this graph is hard to read, but if you would just direct your attention to the blue color, you really don't need the words. The blue is China. The left side reflects the first half of 2017 before National Sword. The right side, the first half of 2018, just one year later. Before National Sword, China used to consume the majority of recycling commodities worldwide. In their policy, National Sword, certain commodities are banned and others are, are subject to strict contamination limits. And that limit right now is less than one-half of 1% in certain loads. Remember, I said the average is 30%. As you look at the blue, you can see that China's inbound markets have all but disappeared. Alternative markets have popped up, mostly in Asia. They have grown, but they cannot handle the volume. And in recycling, supply and demand economics drive prices. Excess material results in low or even negative values. When China stepped away, it created a surplus of materials in the market. And as a result, the value of all that material dropped by 80 to 100% in just over 18 months. The result has been the largest global disruption to the recycling industry ever. So, with all these strains on the existing business model, where is the industry now? In 2019, the cost of processing had risen to $120 per ton in the United States. By the way, ECVC's cost is right in line with that number. We're $128 per ton as of 2019. While costs rose, the value of the commodities dropped to $70 per ton. Twice the cost with half the revenue just doesn't work. This headline is from February 12th, just last week, and it reflects the most recent data on the impact of plunging prices and escalating contamination on the recycling industry. You can see that the value of residential recycling has dropped by two-thirds in just two years. So, where does that leave ECVC? We are upside down financially and we have been. We have lost money in recycling for six of the last eight years and we are on track to lose more than ever this fiscal year. Our losses have only escalated since National Sword. While inbound material is actually above 2017 levels, our income is less than half and it now only covers about 66% of our costs. In fact, our combined losses for the last two years, 2018 and 2019, are more than double what they were six years, the full six-year period prior to National Sword. Unfortunately, the industry does not predict any great turnaround in commodity prices for the foreseeable future. And they're looking two to three years out at this point. So, we're upside down financially and we have been for a while. But even though we have, we've been trying to hold on as long as possible to protect jobs for persons with disabilities. But we're at a point where we're losing jobs now. Our current recycling workforce is down by 11 through attrition. We are stretched as thin as we can be and still be operational. This is tough on our employees and unsustainable for the long run. We need a long-term solution. And you'll find that this solution that we're talking about is the same solutions that are being proposed all throughout the country. It is clear that our current business model just isn't equipped to handle the stressors of the last few years and frankly, the business model just doesn't work. To preserve recycling and jobs for people with disabilities, we need to work together to develop a more sustainable model. That new business model has to be robust enough to generate meaningful benefit to the public, but also be resilient enough to respond to disruptions in markets and materials. We need a model that can stand on its own. That includes revamping the economics of recycling to cover service costs regardless of commodity values, possibly with revenue sharing, evaluating the recycling stream to make sure we focus resources on the right materials, and committing to robust public education to improve the quality of inbound material. That is what we would like to propose for long-term consideration. We do recognize that developing and implementing a new business model for recycling will require thoughtful and careful planning and decision-making and it will take time, but our time's running out. Therefore, we have approached county staff about increasing tipping fees again as a short-term stopgap measure. We have proposed increasing them from $34.50 per ton to $80 per ton for the remainder of this fiscal year and $100 per ton for next fiscal year. I hope you can see from the graph that we have been an outlier on the low end and our request is not unreasonable compared to others in the state. We have been able to keep our fees as low as we have for as long as we have because the county has done a lot of in-kind work with us to help offset our costs. That includes removal of the residue and also includes providing some of the equipment. So, in closing, I want to reemphasize that tipping fees are only a short-term response to the current situation. We must embrace a more durable business model that reflects the realities of today's recycling environment and we look forward to working with Pitt County to define that model. But times are difficult and if we can't get to that new model fairly quickly, ECVC may have no choice but to exit the recycling business. It's not what we want, certainly not what we want. And I hope that's not what you want either. So, I think we have, have to ask each other, all of us, what's recycling worth and what are those 50 to 60 jobs worth for people with disabilities in Pitt County? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lisa. As you understand that recycling has become a very challenging time for Pitt County and certainly for the nation. This is a national epidemic, as I, as I understand it from reading it. But Scott has some comments at this time that he wanted to share with us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes. Recycling is part of our solid waste and recycling department, which operates as an enterprise fund. It's separate and apart from our general fund, so it stands on the revenues it brings in to balance the revenues against expenses. We asked ECVC to come in just to help begin to paint the picture of one component of that operation that is, is having some issues. We would like to come back to you, maybe in two weeks, and kind of give you a preliminary budget look at solid waste and recycling, where we see, give you some recommendations for recycling as we partner with ECVC. And I think Lisa mentioned in the very beginning, they didn't charge us anything to receive this. Then we had a $23 per ton charge that fluctuated depending how, how the markets went. Then it went to 25, then to $34.50. Now, we're talking about going $80 a ton, begin April 1st, through the end of fiscal year, and then $100 a ton in July. So, something needs to be done to, like Lisa said, to, to create a new model and implement that model. So, we'd like to come back, present those recommendations. We're not asking for any action tonight, but we wanted to kind of begin to paint the picture of part of the challenge, whether it's the markets in China, whether it's the 30% contamination on the recycling part of the equation, as well as other challenges we're having within the solid waste fund itself. So, if that's agreeable to the board, we'll come back with some, some recommendations prior to budget and that part of the budget hopefully will be taken care of before you get into budget workshops.
Okay. If there are no further questions, we thank you for your presentation and keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all you've done.
Before we start on this, I'd like to recognize a couple of people in the audience. We just had Mayor Brown from Bevill to show up. Thank you for being here, Mayor Brown. And Brian Barnett has the guest, Christopher Rokoski from ECU MPA Program. He's also the First Lieutenant, won't you stand, Chris? Thank you very much for being here. All right. Moving on, on your public hearing. Mr. Rowe, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two public hearings for you tonight from the planning department. The first one is a rezoning request and this is for Angel Herrera. This is to rezone a property that's about 1.7 acres. It's located on the very eastern end of the county where 264 leads into Beaufort County. It's at the intersection of 264 East and Old Washington Road. Old Washington Road intersects twice on 264, so it's at the far eastern end. This is to rezone a property that's already zoned as light industrial and is being requested to go to general commercial as a conditional district. So, there are specific uses that would be allowed here based on the rezoning request and that is for your consideration tonight, the automobile repair service, automobile towing service, motor vehicle sales and tire sales. So, a little bit of history on this property. I already have mentioned that it is already zoned as light industrial. A rezoning took place back in 2005, shortly after we had countywide zoning and it was changed from rural agricultural at that time to the current zoning district. At that point in time, there was also an indication per the minutes that it was going to be used for fencing business, a lot of outdoor storage activity. So, in turn, that was, that necessitated light industrial zoning designation. What has happened now, staff has noticed in some of our riding around and ensuring compliance with land uses around the county, that there was an active operation on-site that did not comply with the existing zoning. And in turn, that's why we're bringing this before tonight, for you tonight. The landowners have brought in the request to bring in the rezoning and also at the same time, if it's approved, this will gain compliance for the activity that's current, currently on-site. So, again, this particular parcel is right here, bounded in the yellow hash line, just before you get to the Trainers Creek crossing on 264 East that leads into Beaufort County. As far as our existing land use, most of the area right adjacent to here is either undeveloped or in the gold color is residential in nature. There are scattered, a little bit further away, some institutional uses, a church and then some other commercials slash light industrial uses as well. The overall area here from our land use plan map shows it as a commercial crossroad. So, again, that allows a number of different uses, specifically could include limited commercial land uses that are appropriate to the crossroad development, again, typically smaller in scale. And it can be. smaller in scale, and it can be residential, public, institutional, and commercial uses, all at appropriate scale with buffers. Can be on public sewer or on septic systems, and the category is designated prominent crossroad facility or crossroad areas, and this is one of the ones that we have in the county. As far as our existing zoning, you can see again primarily residential, either rural agricultural, rural residential, and then some scattered light industrial here and also some general commercial uses. General Commercial District is primarily intended to accommodate a range of retail service, office, and limited wholesale and moderate-density multifamily development. In this particular area, it would be on septic system. A conditional zoning district, again, allows, this is where you can limit the number of uses and types of uses. Our landowners here have recommended the proposed uses that I've mentioned previously, automotive repair service, automobile towing service, motor vehicle sales, and tire sales. One of the changes that we now bring before you, as far as these conditional district rezonings, is the conceptual sketch plan. Previously, before our latest zoning ordinance amendments, we required a site plan. This allows the property owners to come forward without expending a lot of resources, give us a conceptual drawing, and that kind of gives them the idea if it is, if it's approved, we'll still get the site plan but at a later date, and that'll be handled through staff's review. So here's your sketch plan, just to orient you a bit. This is the area where the shop will be in place. The towing storage area for any vehicles that are brought, be brought in would be in the coral-colored area. The gray area is also for parking, and again, the driveway entrance to the site. There are some existing trees, but remember, this is along 264 East, and with that comes the highway corridor overlay district, which requires a highway buffer yard, fifty-foot wide. There's also requirements for buffer yards twenty-foot wide all the way around the perimeter of the remainder of the property. So with this, no zoning compliance permit will be issued until we receive the site plan that I just mentioned, that will give in more detail all those requirements, and the site plan is in the highway overlay district, and there's different requirements that go along with that, including the landscaping plan. Other requirements, these are somewhat typical. A portion of this property is located within the one-hundred-year floodplain, so a floodplain development permit is required, soil erosion control measures, stormwater calculations, parking spaces will have to be paid for this particular use, and different requirements, either from the environmental health department or DOT, will be required to be met. As far as staff's recommendation, we believe that it is consistent with the land use plan and given the subject's properties, future land use designation is commercial crossroads, and it is in close proximity, relative close proximity to other general commercial property. We believe that it is reasonable and in the public's best interest, based on a number of factors, including being located along a major route. With this also, the planning board reviewed this and has also recommended approval of this particular development. So your staff recommendations are included in your package and include a number of additional conditions that I've just kind of already mentioned. One in particular, though, is that this would not be utilized as a storage area for inoperable vehicles. That basically translates over to a salvage yard. That is not one of the uses that is recommended for tonight. And then all the other conditions that roll, run along with development requirements. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we're ready for the public hearing tonight.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, nobody signed up, but we did receive an email today from a lady this afternoon who could not attend. I have a statement if you'd like me to read it from her.
Let me open it. I now declare the public hearing open at this time.
Yeah, nobody signed up, unless there's somebody in the audience who'd like to come forward.
Okay.
Okay, the email we received is from, let's see.
Karen Hannah.
Yes, Karen Hannah. Says, "My concerns are what I've already observed and experienced. One, the noise all during the night, which makes my dogs bark and wakes me up. I already sleep with the fan on and TV on, but when my dogs hear slamming noises, they bark. The dogs are my alert system at night. If anyone knocks at my door, anytime they let me know. They already have saved what could have been something bad one night. Number two, the lights shining in my home at all times of the night, too. Number three, the place looks like a junkyard. I was told earlier today that they would put up a fence, and I'm glad of that, but he has put up a little office building over there, and he certainly has not taken care of that. Last week, the door was left open for days in the rain. It just shows me that it's going to be a mess. That's my concerns. However, I'd like to say two more things. One, that this is an established neighborhood that is quiet most of the time besides traffic on 264. I really don't want things to change. Number two, there are already three used car lots, one tire service, one repair service within five miles of my home. This is just in Pitt County. Isn't that enough? Thanks for listening and taking time to read this, Karen Hannah."
Thank you. Anyone in the audience who'd like to speak to this? Here none. Now I declare the public hearing closed. James, did you hear that concern?
Yes, sir, that was received by our office just earlier this afternoon, and there's a couple of things. Number one, this property's already zoned as light industrial, which is even a more intensive type of development district. So the, there are no limitations on that. It was not conditional, conditional district zoning, so any of those items that are in the laundry list under light industrial could be placed there today. The other thing I'd like to mention, well, actually a couple of things, you could impose hours or limits on the hours of operation. It's part of a condition that would go along with this particular development. It would have to be concurred upon by the owners. We would, if that's the case, if you include that as part of one of your conditions, we'll ensure that they get the sign off when we come through the site plan review process.
So can I ask you, what you just said right then is that it could be, in other words, so that there would not be this disturbance in the evening that they could...
If you felt compelled, that they need to stop operations, pick a time, seven PM, eight PM, whatever it may be, that's a possibility. And there was another item that slipped my mind now, but...
I'm sorry.
Oh, the other thing is what's going, what's being proposed, none of the fencing, none of the landscaping has been installed yet. If this does go through the site plan review process, we will ensure that all that is taken care of. That certainly limits what you can see from the road. It may also help with some of the abatement of some of the noise there. So those are two items that I'll just bring to your attention, limiting, possibly limited hours of operation, and ultimately, once the site plan is approved and the improvements go in, it will look entirely different there.
When I read this, I became concerned about the quality of life of this family. If there's noise that disrupt them at night concerns me. We've been met with noise with one situation before, and it was over and over and over again about noise down on State Mill Road, train, that noise. If you can't sleep at night, you can't work at day. And I don't know whether there is a family. I know where the area is, this is in the district on north of the river, but I don't know if there are children in this home or not, because this comment did not go, and looking at the adjacent properties and checking with them, the people that I checked, it was all right, but this letter here now brings me concern. I think it needs to be investigated. We shouldn't want people to not be able to sleep at night. We shouldn't want the children not being able to study, and if it's going to stop at a certain hour, that's a different story. But you have found that when they said it going to stop at night, even when they were digging down on, on, what's the name of that road, not far from there, when digging sand on this property, they didn't stop it when they said they would. But you can't count on businesses for doing as they say. And if we can wait on this, I would prefer that that would happen so that this family will not be upset about noise and disturbances. How would you feel if you wanted, couldn't sleep at night? If you had children, the dogs are already about, the children needs to study, and I will go out and look at this. I didn't, I didn't see this prior to, and I didn't know anyone out there that I could call about it, but I know Mr. Lilly wasn't that far, and he's dead, but anyway, I think it needs to be further investigated, Mr. Rose. Is that down your line?
If you direct me as such, yes.
I, I think families, sleeping at night is important. We have enough social issues that disturbances can come up, and it causes stress for families. And I'm concerned about how this family was fare with the noise, and I don't know what an automobile place that working in it would keep noise up like this, that she would send this communication. So I would like to table this.
Commissioner Albright, Commissioner Nunley, and then Commissioner.
Thank you. If you're looking into this, could you also think about the light that's escaping the property? Is there a way to redirect the lighting that, so it wouldn't be shining on the neighbors?
Yes, there is.
I don't know, but I believe that we've had that come up with some of your more recent proposals, which were very interesting and appreciated. Go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rose, for your presentation. It's a couple of things that, you know, come to mind to me is, we've got a business here that's obviously working hard to make, make it work, and in particular, you know, this, this plan, this business plan seems to be in line according to your office's assessment, in line with the future land use plan, which is something I think that we ought to, that we ought to look at, and then also, commercial crossroads, and a lot of times we talk about trying to get services out into the far-flung regions of the county, and in my view, commercial crossroads is really an opportunity to make sure that these services are provided in close proximity to our residents. Obviously, there's a balance that needs to be met, and do we, I hear from you that it's already zoned light industrial, perhaps the conditional use permit provides the county an opportunity to provide more conditions on that property so that we can have a little bit more regulatory say about exactly what's happening there. Would that be a correct assessment?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Ward.
You said it, excuse me, kind of exactly what I was saying in my understanding, and I have seen the site as it is now, just riding by it, but what is being proposed will make it look even better because of the building up of the burns and the planting of the trees and the shrubbery and whatever, and I'm hearing that it would be almost, certainly, I know that it would be an improvement over what's there now, and I think that if we could just take care of the lighting and it may be included in our motion of accepting this with the understanding that the lighting would go off, you know, at six, or not the lighting, but something with the lighting, the redirecting.
We're just redirecting. I mean, if he's operating a tow yard, he's going to need light, yeah, I'm sure.
Look out the noise.
The noise, that's what I'm saying, that that be, you know, business stop, you know, by six or seven, so they won't be coming in and out or whatever, what you said, Mr. Rose. So I think with that added, I think we could move on with it, if you'll make a motion.
I have just one follow-up question, sorry. If this is a towing operation, and I guess my concern is if we put a restriction on hours of operation and it's a towing operation, what, what impact would that have on, on their ability to conduct business, or is it possible to have a restriction but with, with some reasonable allowance for them to continue to be able to operate the towing operation? Because that obviously all meant hours of the night.
You can actually do, as you see fit, as far as the conditions are concerned, so what you could do, what I'm estimating some of the major noise would be with the automobile repair. So if that's conducted only certain hours of the day, if the towing operation's going on, hopefully that's not as noisy. Again, that's typically the case, they'll bring those cars in, park them behind the fence, and that's it until they get another call. But the automobile repair is a little bit different story.
But limit the repair by, by the time that it would stop.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I just, it's hard, it's hard for me to, to see that there's going to be a lot of noise.
What she's saying right here.
From this, from this business, and they already, some of it, I mean, existing already, and they don't even have a burn.
They've been in operation for a few months, yes.
For a few months, you know, so it is a condition, so we could put some stipulations, but I would think that maybe that they will stop work, what, five o'clock, six o'clock? So how much noise is going to be sleep time?
If you're asking for a recommendation, I would not cut it off at five or six, I'd at least go to seven PM.
Well, yeah. I would like to say that you don't, I don't, I've been by automobile places and repairs, and if there's noise now, it's not going to go away. And I don't know if there are children in this home, and I don't know this, the reason as to why she can't get here, if she's disabled herself, but there's some questions that bring concern to me. If you were living next door and there's noise keeping you up at night, would you want it there? Is my question. And I, I really think we should table this until you further look into the noise and the quality of life of this family. This boy should not be passing stuff and not knowing what is going on in the house.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Rose, and, and maybe trying to draw a line on the specific type of noise with the automobile repair shop, oftentimes maybe the compressor, the air drill, the air compression tools that potentially, you know, that make a louder noise, perhaps if, if there were a way for our board to limit the restriction of the business hours to the specific use of the compressor or the air tools, so that the, and feel like they had to close up shop and run home if they needed to work in the shop. I feel like putting too many restraints on their ability to operate might be unreasonable. So if, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure why he can't investigate and come back later.
I'll move that we accept staff's recommendation for conditional approval with the, with, with a reasonable limit on the use of air tools, and let's say, what do you think?
After seven.
Seven, seven o'clock, seven PM, but to not restrict the towing operations.
And what if they don't?
And in the spirit that Pitt County is pro-business and pro-smart business, I will second that.
People got to be able to live safely.
Did you second that?
Yes.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'd like to see the limitation of lighting.
I'd like to know before I vote, I would want to be in a, in a, in a business next door, we got to think about the residents.
Okay, I think you have been...
You don't live near it.
We've had a motion in a second.
I move that we table it until he find out the answer to these questions. This family deserve to sleep at night.
Janice, you have one?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that under the law, given these conditions, the applicant has to consent to the conditions, and the applicant has consented to the conditions that have been presented to you. They have not yet consented to the additional conditions you're putting on, and that will need to be part of this process as well.
They have, they are aware, but we don't have, the signature is obtained when the zoning compliance permit is issued, and that will be at the time of site plan approval.
Okay.
That's the consent.
Okay.
So we are voting on the motion to approve this, correct?
Yes, with the stipulation.
Yes.
Yes. The motion to table did not have.
I'd like to make a substitute motion that we table this till later on.
Good.
Until these answers are, uh, presented by Ms. I am pro-business. I like to see people to get businesses on the way. I'm, I'm agreeable. I'm not against, but I do think that we should have a good life for living. And we should find out the answers to this before we vote on it, because once we pass it, it's passed. I move that we table this until the next meeting or, uh, uh, near time in the future.
Is there a second to our motion? I hear none.
I didn't expect.
Please, substitute motion that we include lighting restrictions.
Lighting restrictions?
The same, same thing that Chris is, uh, said.
Do you second him?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm making a substitute motion to, uh, add to Chris's, if I can, that we include lighting.
Just make an additional one.
Yes, uh, uh, yeah, I guess that's what I'm trying to do.
If this comes in, you're gonna hear.
What exactly are we restricting him to?
I'm trying to keep lighting from escaping the property and, and invading the space of the neighbors. Um, and I think that's doable. Um, I don't want to have them shut off their lights in the property, but when the light escapes and it's shining onto the neighbor's property, that does concern me. And if it's, if it's all night lighting and it's not on, you know, I, I think it's their property that they want to light and not the neighbor's property. That's my concern.
Okay.
And I believe that's doable. Is that, is that not right?
Uh, could not say. I, I would think it would, but I, I have not seen it at nighttime.
I don't know how, how close the house is or any of that, but I.
Well, I mean, they're gonna put a fence up and they're gonna have the, um.
Landscape.
Yes.
Burn.
Which is essentially all that they can do. I mean, you can't help but drive it in and out the driveway for a couple of seconds. Light escapes from the vehicle.
Okay, uh, man, I think it's getting a little complicated. Uh, we've added, what do you have, uh, men, uh, clerk to his, to substitute what, what we're voting on now?
So we have a mo, so the original motion to table failed for lack of a second. Then you had a motion and a second, and now you have a substitute motion and then a second.
Possibly, is that easier?
Additional amendment, I think it was.
Right, a substitute is appropriate to add conditions with lighting, and then you would need to seek a second for that.
Okay. Do we do a second for the lighting?
So that would just be added to the motion?
That's the intent, is that, yes.
Right.
Is that what we're voting on?
Right, you're adding that to the motion. That's, that was.
But is that, Alex, is that to add to the motion?
To, to.
Not a new motion?
Right.
Okay, well, I can support that to at least check on the lighting and make sure they do what they can.
Okay.
Well, I can second that.
Okay, it has been moved and properly seconded with the necessary motion that's made and additional. All in favor of saying motion, let it be known by, uh, voting.
So I think there's confusion as to what you're voting on. Um, is it an amended motion with a second, or is it a substitute motion for lighting?
It's amended.
The amended.
He just added, then to look into the lighting.
Right.
I'm with you. We've got the record correct. So it's an amended motion with both conditions.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we making him do something about the lighting, or are we just asking him to check on it?
Check in it, to look at it.
You're asking me?
I'm confused myself.
I, I think, um.
I'm confused about the motion. I thought it was an amendment to the motion. So in that case, parliamentarian, we need to get that taken care of, and then we vote on the amended motion, right?
But I seconded the motion to add it to the original motion, which is what you said, right, Alex?
Yeah, his intention was to add the amended, uh, to the, to the, to the original motion.
To the original motion.
Right.
I have a one question then. I'm going back to the time, the operational time. We're saying limited at seven P.M.
Right.
I'm assuming, but I don't wanna assume, that that means they don't start back up till seven A.M. or some other time. So I need to know the actual hours of operation, not just when they shut off.
I would say six A.M. to seven P.M.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, I think in, 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 in a sense of clarity, you want to move that, uh, read that again, uh, so we know what we're voting on, please.
Um, if I may for the, for the clerk.
Yes, ma'am.
It is a motion that has been properly amended and seconded to approve what's been presented with two additional conditions. One related to the hours of operation, limiting it from six A.M. to seven P.M. daily. And the other, um, is to, um, investigate downward lighting to assure that lighting does not spill to the neighbor's property.
Very good.
Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes. All in favor of that?
Madam Attorney, with one clarification, that the hours of operation involving air tools and air compressors.
For air tools and air compressors only. Thank you. Thank you. And is that right, Commissioner Albright, to, um, look into the downward lighting or to require downward lighting?
I think looking into it, and I think that the, the intent is to keep it out of the house. I don't know how, again, how far off the property line the house is.
So that it's maintained.
I'm talking about someone's house being flooded with light from a business that becomes a nuisance.
It's not going to.
Okay.
It's very calm for a question.
You have heard, heard the question. All, all in favor now, let it be known by your vote, please.
I just think they just vote, please vote.
At this time, I'm gonna abstain from voting.
Is there a conflict of interest, Commissioner?
I can't say.
Oh, it, it passes. Thank you. I'm, Mr. Wob, continue?
Yes, sir.
All right. The other public hearing is for Woodmore Farms subdivision, street improvements. Glad to say this project's coming to an end. Um, engineering and planning staff have been working on this for close to a couple of years. Actually, negotiations and questions about this with the attorney, uh, we were meeting probably four years ago. So, um, the improvements out, uh, in Woodmore Farms subdivision have been completed. We reported that at your last meeting. The end result, um, the amount of money expended was over five hundred and forty thousand dollars. And you can see, um, based on the resolution that was adopted early on, we would give a ten-year period of repayment. So the annual assessment is set for each individual property owner, one thousand sixty-two dollars and forty-eight cents over that ten-year period. So just a couple of pictures, just to orient you as to what streets have been repaired. Mayor's Way, Trails End, Saddleway, Trotter's Way, and a portion of Wesley Lane. Uh, and you can see some of the issues we had previously. Lot of issues with the roadside drainage district, uh, ditches, as well as some major cracking in the roadway. Uh, this is kind of what we ended up with. Lot of improvement with the drainage, and the roadways are in tip-top shape right now. And as already indicated, Department of Transportation has accepted these roads for maintenance. They did that at the, uh, December Board of Transportation meeting. So, um, last meeting, you may recall, you did adopt a resolution declaring the cost and preliminary assessment role. That has since been sent to all the benefited property owners. There are fifty-one total. That was sent out just the following day, on February the fourth. Public hearing notices were also, um, posted in the Daily Reflector during the required period. There is one change, however. When property has changed ownership since the preliminary assessment role was prepared, uh, that was, uh, transferred to a Mr. Cruz. Uh, a revised assessment role, I believe the clerk has provided that to you tonight, should be included with the resolution that is to, uh, be considered for tonight's meeting. So there are two recommendations. Adopt the resolution confirming the assessment role for Woodmore Farms. And then also directing the very final step before, uh, any taxes would be collected, would be to direct the tax collector to publish that the role has been confirmed. So those are your two recommended actions tonight, Mr. Chairman, and we're ready for the public hearing.
Thank you very much. Now, do you have a public hearing open?
We have. Mr. Chairman, nobody's signed up. Unless there's somebody here in the audience who'd like to step forward and speak?
Yes, sir. You state your name or address and, uh.
My name is Gilbert Riddle. I live at sixteen forty-seven Trails End in the Woodmore subdivision. Uh, on behalf of the homeowners of the community, I'd like to thank the board for, and James especially, for all the efforts that's gone forward for this project. Just want to express my personal gratitude and thanks to the county. It's been a very long, very, uh, trying, uh, period of time with a lot of, uh, interaction and discussion. But again, thank you on behalf of the homeowners. James, thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Uh, if there's no other, now declare the public hearing closed. What's the favor, pleasure of the board, please?
A second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. We approve. Let's vote, please.
Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we have now the oversight ordinance change, Jim and Randy, please.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Uh, try to keep it brief tonight. Uh, happy to be here to come and talk with you about, uh, some EMS oversight, uh, ordinance review. Have, uh, Dr. Roberto Cortella here with us tonight, our EMS medical director, uh, big supporter of EMS and of you all, um, in the back. I'm sorry. Okay. So, uh, as tasked by the Commissioners, it, uh, one of the tasks of the EMS Oversight Committee is to periodically review the oversight order of the EMS system ordinance. Um, historically, that has included the non-emergency franchises and the nine-one-one side of EMS here in the county. Last fall, Dr. Mike Brown, who's not here tonight, uh, he had some fire training actually to attend, um, appointed a subcommittee to review the ordinance and suggest changes. The last time any changes had been made to the ordinance was twenty fourteen. Um, we held two meetings last fall, in November and December, to, uh, recommend changes to this ordinance. So, uh, as I said, the ordinance was one piece. We recommended, uh, to the full committee that we'd be separated into two separate ordinances. They, they really do two different things, um, overseeing the nine E franchises and the nine-one-one emergency services. Uh, also, in case you were not already aware, public health is an integral part of emergency services and what we do. Uh, and so as the committee was reviewing this, we thought it would be a good idea to include the public health director as a voting member of that board to help drive decision-making in EMS. Um, and so that was a, a driver as well. And then, uh, it had been some time, and so we recommended some language amendments to the ordinance. Presented those in the January meeting this year, uh, to the full committee. Um, Commissioner Floyd Huggins is a huge supporter of that, uh, had some good comments, and, uh, the feedback is well received. Those change, amendments were unanimously accepted by the board, and I'm bringing them for you tonight. A public hearing was required in the original nine E franchise piece of this because of the dollar amounts that were required. Last part of this, we do have, bring some recommendations before you. Um, we recommend that you open a public hearing in case anybody has comments. Uh, we'd like for you to approve the ordinances as amended, um, and I believe those have been submitted to you. And then, uh, last recommendation is adding the public health director, uh, to that as a voting member. But then also another motion, if you'll appoint Dr. John Silvernail as the current public health director to our committee. And I would entertain any questions if you have any of those.
Okay.
If that concludes your presentation. Now, I declare the public hearing open. Is there anybody?
No, sir, nobody's signed up at this time.
Anybody in the audience like to speak to this? I hear none. I declare the public hearing closed. What's the favor of the board?
I move that we accept the staff recommendations for this board. And in the process, thank these people who have been with us for many, many, many years. On a volunteer almost basis, and it's almost a full-time job.
Yes, ma'am.
I second that. We need two motions, don't we?
Or you can include both in one if you like.
Yeah, I was including all of it, yes.
I second.
Moving properly second, let it be known by your vote, please. Thank you very much. Public address to the board?
Yes, next we have public addresses to the board. We have Lee Pascasio signed up. He'll come forward to the auditorium. The attorney will read our public addresses to the board statement.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Pitt County welcomes comments on all matters of public concern. Um, we ask that all comments, uh, be relevant and respectful, and I'll keep your time at three minutes per speaker. When you come to speak, please state your name and your address.
Yes, sir. We'd like to take your name and your address, please, sir.
Lee Pascasio, ten nineteen West Wright Road, Greenville, North Carolina. Thank you for all you do for all citizens. Over the past twenty years, I've been before you two times. Twenty years ago, requesting that you help our disabled veterans returning home, and you did. And just a few years ago, I asked you to please treat our deputies fair, and you did. Some of you know I'm just an old platoon sergeant, always for tots, that type thing. Back over fifty years ago, as a platoon sergeant, we lost, uh, a, a lot of fine men, far away, and some rice paddies. Some of them were mine. When I came home, our deputies here in Pitt County became my troops. In ways I've never left those rice paddies a long time ago. I took care of my troops there, and I, I still take care of my troops here in Pitt County. Our deputies, twenty-four-seven, out here protecting and serving. As far as I'm concerned, we have the finest sheriff and the finest deputies in the nation. You know that from a few years ago when I spoke with you. We have outstanding city police officers in Greenville. But any of them will tell you that a deputy sheriff, a field deputy, must know as much, well, really more, and do more than any city police officer. Now think about this. Ten miles out in the county, in a ditch in Playwood or Calico or Henner Hand, a deputy sheriff is bleeding in the ditch, he's not gonna get help as fast as a city police officer at three A.M. in the morning. Our deputies are our knights of the county. You've heard that before. Only a few years ago, Scott told me, Mr. Elliott told me, that our deputy pay is in the same ballpark as our city police officers. What happened? Has it eroded? I know you'll be fair and honest and reasonable on the issue of fair pay for our deputy sheriffs. You always have been. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience like to speak? I hear none, and I declare the public hearing closed. I'm sorry. Public address closed. Okay, uh, now we'll move on to items for report. Sam, Mr. Kroom?
Chairman McLawhorn, Commissioners, Mr. Elliott's good to be with y'all tonight. Um, before I give the collection report, I do want to let you know that the twenty-twenty reappraisal notices have been mailed. Um, they're currently traveling, and citizens should start receiving them this week. So, um, as far as the January twenty-twenty collection report, the Pitt County fiscal year to date, the collection rate is ninety-four point five-nine percent. This time last year was ninety-five point five-eight percent. Pitt County Tax Administration continues to pursue all delinquent taxes owed to the county with all. county with all the remedies available to us through the North Carolina General Statutes. It is my recommendation that you approve this report as presented.
I motion that we approve the report as stated.
Second.
Moving properly second, and we approve the report as stated. Let's vote.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We now have Brian Barnett come for a monthly financial report.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners. I present to you tonight the monthly financial report for the General Fund and our Solid Waste Enterprise Fund for the first seven months of the fiscal year, ending on January 30th. On the General Fund side, we have collected 76.3% of our anticipated revenues, and we have spent 57.2%. Both percentages are slightly off from where we were at this point last year, and our revenues to expenditures are slightly lower due to the purchase of the Warren Farm back in July. On the solid waste side, we have brought in 72.5% of our anticipated budget, and we have spent 52.24%. I will point out that at this time of the year, this is typically when we start to see a change in our monthly reporting due to the fact that most of our revenues are based to our property tax, and most of that revenue has come in for the year. I'll also point out on the solid waste fund, we are looking very good towards the budget, but we are still continuing our path to monitor the revenues and expenses in solid waste as we move towards the end of the fiscal year. That being said, if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Just want to point out that on the solid waste fund, we, as we enter the end of the year, we will be in another challenging position. And when we come back to you in, say, two weeks to talk about that fund overall, we'll be able to highlight that further and talk about the different challenges.
I move for acceptance.
Second.
Moving properly second, that we accept, all in favor? Let it be known by your vote, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The management report, Scott.
Yes, sir. Next item, your next meeting dates, month, the month of March. You will meet on the second and fourth Mondays versus the first and third due to the NACO Conference coming up. That'll be a 9:00 a.m., 6:00 p.m. meeting, respectfully. Remind the board of the NACO, which is the National Association of Counties Conference in Washington, D.C. That is their annual legislative conference. That'll be February 29th and March the 4th. And then, last item is kind of a good news item. This has been in the press, but want to bring some closure to it with the board. This deals with the property in the Maple Ridge subdivision. It's 761 Maple Ridge Road. We're showing some pictures on the screen, some before pictures. This is a house that was basically abandoned, and we've had, through the years, probably 10 years, 15 years have been, there's been attempts to have the house torn down due to be abandoned. It had been a haven for teenagers doing things in there that shouldn't be doing and other illicit activity. The, there's been a petition before the courts to have it torn down, and the last effort, you had Mr. Michael Lovelace come before you. He had re-initiated that whole process, and through that process, somebody actually decided to buy the house, and they are rehabbing the house. So, these after pictures show the process of the, the houses basically understand it being gutted and is going to be rehabbed. We did want to point out Keith Edwards, who is one of our Pitt County Building Inspectors, kind of led the charge on this process through all the years, trying to get some action taken on this, want to give him some credit. And, but we're just happy to see that the house is now going to be taxed value back on the county's books, and it will not be an ice war in this neighborhood. And as I understand it, the neighbors, once they saw the cleanup occurring, they came over and helped, commenced to help the new property owner cut down trees and clean it up. They were just very thrilled to see this happen. So, we're glad to see conclusion brought to this. Was nothing a conclusion we would have ever expected, but it's the best conclusion there could be. That's all I have.
Very good, thank you. Items for consent.
I move for acceptance.
You want to get a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Let's vote, please. Thank you. Now we have the items for discussion. Chair Pauline, if you would.
Good evening.
Evening.
I am going to defer to my finance director in just a minute here. At my request, I've asked him to do some research on our deputy salaries. We were running into an issue where we have sergeants who make the same amount as lieutenants. We have a captain who makes less than a lieutenant, and that's just unfair as they come to me and expect to have a rectification of that situation. So I've asked the finance director to do a comparison with the local police department here in the county to see where we stand in relation to them. And so at this time, I will defer to my finance director.
Thank you.
I want to start with some background of...
Ernest, can you pull the mic up?
Absolutely, yes, sir. I want to start with some background of, you know, the office of the sheriff compared to a department, not police department. Sheriff's hold an elected office like the governor, chief justice of the Supreme Court, attorney general, et cetera. Deputy sheriffs are appointed by the sheriff who answer only to the citizens. Police chiefs are appointed by a civilian city administrator and serve that administrator's pleasure. The office of the sheriff is constitutionally established. North Carolina 1776 Constitution established the office of the sheriff. The office of the sheriff predate city and county government by more than 92 years, continues to have the duties and authorities of sheriffs as they were under common law in England. Some of the service responsibilities of the sheriff's office as compared to the police department are, the police department's going to do your general law enforcement services for a municipality. Your sheriff's office and their deputies are going to do general law enforcement services for the county and all municipalities. Operation of the detention center, security of the court, service of civil process, concealed carry permits, handgun purchase permits, sex offender registration, and offender compliance checks. And these things are done for the cities as well as the county citizens. The average salary comparison by classification for the Pitt County Sheriff's Office compared to the Greenville Police Department, as you can tell, I've got a graph set up where we have sergeants, lieutenants, captains, a major, and chief deputy in comparison to the Greenville officers. If you flip through the next page, you'll see that there's a graph here that better shows this data I collected. The average salary variance by classification, 9.59% Greenville's paid more at sergeant, 13.40% paid more at lieutenant, 9.40% paid more at captain. The major tightens up, and then at chief, you're looking at a 10.65% difference variance in their pay. The next study I did was classification and pay plan comparison by salary range, and you'll notice that the, the top salaries, which are very hard to reach, potentially most of your deputies are never going to reach those top salaries, are competitive with Greenville, but the minimum salaries are not as competitive. And if you go to the next page, you'll see that, again, I've done a chart to show the pay plan variance by minimum salary. 8.79% for sergeant, 13.62% for lieutenant, 10.59% for captain, 5.30% for major, and 2.77% for chief. We've requested that we make these adjustments to the classification and pay plan, moving sergeants at the Pitt County Sheriff's up to a grade 71, or a 73 from a grade 71, moving lieutenants up from a grade 73 to a grade 76, captains up from a grade 76 to a grade 79, majors up from grade 79 to grade 81, chief deputies up from grade 82 to grade 84. What this does is it puts us, it keeps us in the county's policy while putting us one step, one grade ahead of what Greenville would make at that minimum salary. This will not put every deputy sheriff over every police officer, nor will it do vice versa. What it will do is it will make us competitive, and depending on the officer's or deputy's experience level, it could put one more than the other, but it would be a competitive salary. Total cost for classification and pay plan adjustments are, total cost for requested classification and pay plan adjustments will be $631,213 for fiscal year 2020, 2021. This amount includes an increase for salaries, merit, COLA raises, and fringe benefits. Current employees would be placed in the new salary grade and keep their salary step as reward for longevity. The sheriff's office requests that Pitt County Board of Commissioners prioritize funding for these adjustments during the 2020-2021 budget process. One quick thing before we close, the sheriff has agreed to open, during our meeting today with the county finance director and Ms. Florida Hardy, we, the sheriff agreed to open E-Bloc and use the profit for federal inmate revenue and use the profits from that to help with these costs. Now if anyone has any questions?
Okay, before question, Scott, would you make any comments concerning this?
Just obviously, we're in the process of beginning to develop the fiscal year 2021 budget, and I guess along with that, our HR department does do a, we're in our fifth cycle of a three-year cycle, 15th year, where HR does do a pay classification study countywide for all fiscal departments, including the sheriff. I know that HR's looking at this now. We haven't totally digested this. We just received this, I think, last Thursday or Friday. So we just would like some time to look at it and see how it, how it corresponds to how we treat all other departments of the county as a whole, so it's equitable across the board.
Any other comments from the Commissioner, Commissioner Nolan?
Thanks for the presentation. On your numbers, I was wondering if you've got an average range. I was wondering if you have a numbers breakdown about numbers sergeant, lieutenant, captain, major, chief department, department chief, as it relates to the comparison between the sheriff's office and the GPD. Do you have those numbers with you?
No, sir.
Okay, would you mind shooting those over so that we can take a look at those?
Any other questions?
How many total positions are affected by the $621,000?
You would need the sergeant's one.
I mean, how many, how many physical people?
I don't have that number. I'd have to get it to you.
Forty or fifty, I thought?
Yeah, approximately forty to fifty, yes, sir.
Okay.
I agree with the, what the county manager said. We'll just study and look at it.
Look at it at the same time.
Okay. Well, I want, I want to say that we strive here to, to be very competitive with the other salaries, and I'm sure that the county manager and our finance director is going to look at this very, very, very seriously and see what can we do in terms of the budget process. But we certainly appreciate you bringing that to our attention, and I think that it's noteworthy.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Item for the decision here is John Denver and Tim Corle.
Good evening. Back in April 2019, staff reported to this board that we'd like to go out to bid for the operations of the 14 convenience sites. We sent out bids first of December and received those bids back January 7th. After we reviewed the bids and met with staff, we would like to reject these, ask you to reject these bids and allow us to negotiate with the two current contractors and negotiate a new contract, either three to five years, with each of the two contractors that we're existing, we're using right now. We would, before, once we negotiate these contracts, I'll, I'll bring them back for your, for your approval. And be glad to answer any questions anybody has. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Thanks, John. So, looking here at the hourly rate, when we're looking at this breakdown, is that hourly rate that we're paying, paying the third party?
That would be, that would be the hourly rate.
So not, not, not the hourly rate that the, the individual that's working on the site's getting?
No, sir.
I guess, my, my question is, is that, you know, what, what's the take-home pay for these folks that are working at the sites?
Well, one of the things that we put in this RFP was that they had to at least pay their employees, and this would be a negotiation, eight dollars or federal minimum wage, whichever is more. Right, right now, they're getting paid less than that, is my understanding. Yes, sir.
Really? And we want to do business with these folks?
No, he said. But, Mr. Tim, he's asking not to accept a bid, why?
Correct.
Yes.
And to renegotiate.
And to renegotiate.
Renegotiate.
Okay.
And one of the things is looking at their, at their salaries.
Do we need a motion?
So it's a...
At the employee's, what they're paying the employees to get that salary a little higher.
Yeah, and that's, that's one thing I was going to add, is with the renegotiation, they've actually come back and asked us to increase rates, and so this would give them the opportunity to hopefully raise rates for the employees if we just renegotiate the existing contract, rather than just take what we have on paper.
We're also, we're also looking at a three-year contract where we can agree upon some type of escalator, rather than just having it be a flat rate from here on out. That way, we, they know going into it that we've pre-negotiated that, we don't have to worry about them coming back before you for it.
I move approval for the recommendation that you made.
Second.
Has been moved properly second all the way forward. Let it, let it be known by your vote, please. Thank you very much. Sam Kroom again.
Good evening again. Good evening again. I'm bringing an item of decision to the board's attention tonight, and it comes by the way of Bristol Hospitality's LLC. They are, through their attorneys, are asking that the Board of Commissioners consider waiving a fare-to-file penalty that totals $30,328.20. Whenever this hotel started in Pitt County, it hired an accounting firm to, to do its accounting. That firm failed to file the returns, did not notify them. It was not until Pitt County Tax Administration notified them that they had an obligation due to the county. Once we notified them, they paid all the taxes that were due, and they agreed to pay a fare-to-pay penalty, which is equal to 10% of what was the tax liability. Their attorney's asking that y'all waive this based on the same principle as the North Carolina Department Revenue Secretary has as far as waiving a fare-to-file penalty. He made, the attorney made their first request back in January, which is in your package, and on February 10th, through some conversations I had with the attorney, they understand that the fare-to-pay penalty is not waivable since they actually collected the tax. But since then, they have complied. They're in compliance with us. They're filing and paying like they should. So it is my recommendation that this board grants the fare-to-file penalty waiver based on good compliance and condition on the company paying the fare-to-pay penalty, which, like I said, would be $12,131.25.
I move that we approve this recommendation.
I second it.
Has been moved properly second. Let it be known by your vote, please.
Thank you.
Commissioner, what, per can we... Thank you very much. Okay, Brian again.
Uh, good evening again. I had hoped, uh, to bring you an update on our two thousand twenty limited obligation bonds that we were looking to go forward with this spring. Um, our plan was to set the public hearing for the bond process tonight, um, but we, uh, in conjunction with Pitt County Schools, are looking to, uh, take a step back on this project. Um, as you may be, uh, remember from our last presentation, the core anchor of this project was a renovation project at A.G. Cox Middle School. Um, we were looking at roughly around twelve point five million, uh, as part of our total package, uh, of just shy of twenty-one million, um, which included A.G. Cox, the Warren Farm, uh, property, uh, a compactor at Solid Waste, security cameras, and school bus cameras. Um, the, uh, Pitt County Schools took the project out to bid, uh, which is part of the bond process. Uh, we have to have the bids in hand before we can complete the sale of the bonds. Uh, we were hoping to be in that twelve point five million dollar range. Uh, the bids came back. They received two bids, uh, one for seventeen million and one for eighteen million. Uh, at this time, Pitt County Schools would like to, um, take a step back, uh, look at their bid pro, uh, look at their bids, look at the process, the, their proposal with their architect, and rebid the project. Um, it, it's, it could be as, as far as six months. Um, so instead of looking at a spring, uh, sale of our bonds, we, we're looking at, uh, hopefully, uh, a, um, fall sometime this October, maybe November, uh, we'd hope to be able to complete this process. Um, this does put us, um, in a, in a situation with the Warren Farm property as we had hoped to reimburse ourselves during this fiscal year, um, as, as part of the budget and as part of our conversation with the school system. Uh, we understand that that is gonna put us, um, it's, it's just gonna put us a couple of months off schedule. Um, but hopefully, if, if the bond, if the bids come in better in the fall, then we can move this process along and then reimburse ourselves.
The, the effect for the fund balance, as we move to July one, the new fiscal year, the fund balance will have a, a drop due to the three point eight million dollars being spent out of it. But we know that in the, in two thousand twenty-one, we'll reimburse that. Even as we defend ourselves with the, um, bond rating agencies, once we go for this next lobs, we'll be able to explain that. And they'll, when they ask, well, why did it drop? We can say why and what that lobs that we will borrow, we'll reimburse it. So, but we wanted you to know ahead of time that that would be a factor.
Are there any questions?
Move approved for the recommendation.
This is safe.
That we step back and review. We're gonna wait till later on.
No motion is necessary.
There's no motion necessary.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Scott?
Okay, next on page one thirty-three, you have, um, appointments and reappointments to the Pitt County Board of Equalization and Review. You have a recommendation to reappoint Edwin Congleton and John Shepherd. And you have also a recommendation to appoint Jerry Shackelford, who will be taking the place of Kobe Heat.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, reappoint Mr. Congleton, Mr. Shepherd, and to appoint, uh, Mr. Shackelford.
Second.
Let's vote, please.
Okay.
Next, you have on item five, a reappointment to the Pitt County Board of Health. Dr. Servonell is recommending the reappointment of Martha Inglewick. I'm pronouncing that right. Inglekeek? Okay, thank you. To serve on the, the Board of Health in the, the nurse position on the board.
Has been moved. And second, let's vote, please. Thank you. Uh, now we have closed session. I'm gonna ask the, our attorney to take us to the closed session.
Yes, it has been suggested that this board go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen point one one A three, to consult with an attorney employed by the public body in order to preserve that attorney-client privilege under subsection A six, to consider a personnel matter, and under subject A one, to prevent the disclosure of confidential information. With that, you'll need a motion to go into closed.
Motion to go into closed session, please.
Second.
Has been moved properly. Second, that we go into closed session.
That's all right. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well, now into closed session.
Um, Sam, we're gonna do the personnel.
Um, Sam, we're going to do the personnel.
Welcome back to open session. I think we have Commissioner Nunley and Commissioner White. Just then Commissioner Nunley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move that effective next pay period that our register of deeds, Lisa Nichols, receive a pay increase of 7.2%, which would reflect a 2.4 percentage PEP increase in line with county standards over the last three years.
Has been moved. Has been moved properly. Second, let it be known by your vote. Okay. It passes. The, I think Commissioner White, you have a...
I would like to make a motion to approve the closed session minutes from February the 3rd.
Second it.
Okay, let's vote. Thank you. Commissioner, comment. I'm sorry? Commissioner, comments?
No comments.
Yeah, just an update on the snagging projects. We've now gotten over a million dollars in grants from Soil and Water. They were working in Farmville last week, and after clearing there, the water dropped two feet in less than a day.
I'm sorry, Chairman McGonhorn, I do have a comment. Blackjack Fire Department will have a pancake and sausage supper this Friday, so if y'all could please come out and support us, we would appreciate that.
Yeah, he's saying you treating us all?
Yeah, I sure am.
I have a comment in response to the residents who've asked why they build it, why we made a decision to build the ABC store on Easy Street. I must inform you that the decision was made by the ABC Board that that building be moved, and I was not consulted, and I'm only informed as the rest of us. So, that wasn't something that we decided. The ABC Board made that decision. I've been getting a lot of questions about it. Is that correct, Mr. Manager?
That's correct.
Thank you. Also, for those residents who still inquire about when the announced Walmart retail store would be built in the area behind Station House Fire Department, please be informed that the Walmart Company has decided not to build the store due to a change in the company policy. I inquired about it. I sent an email to Walmart some time ago, and that still remain, the Walmart is still not going to be built. I keep getting that answer, that question, so I wanted you to know, it's the company that made that decision. I would like to encourage the residents of District 2 to please go on the website for Pitt County Government and read up on boards and commission, and please fill out the application to be a part of decisions that help make certain judgmental calls as it relates to management, operations, buildings, and location, and whatever else the board is supposed to do that you sign up for. I'm encouraging you to sign up to be a part of the government of the Pitt County Board of Commission. What's that? WWW?
PittCountyNC.gov.
Dot PittCountyNC.gov. Did I say it right?
Correct.
Anyway, go look for it and sign. Thank you so very much.
No comment.
Motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second. All right, let's vote.